It's two o'clock. The meeting will come to order. We have all of our trustees, the exceptional trustee, Bowman, I'm not sure where she is yet, so I'll see if she's showing up. We have our treasurer, we have our director, assistant director, we have our communications specialist, and we do not have general counsel. So we have two items, let me see if there's anything else. So we have a quorum, thank you. We have two items on the agenda. And I think it would be better, because they don't know if the financial discussion, the budget summary will take longer, so without exception, without objection from anyone, I like to flip-flop the items on the agenda and take on the relocation materials early. There are no objections, proceed, that's our action. Okay, we have, Anne gave out the different people here. Everyone, every question for relocation material, I'm assuming this is confidential as far as who submitted it, is that correct? So we don't put the person's name out there. And the book is being challenged. And I believe our job is simply to determine whether or not the book is in violation of Idaho statute eighteen fifteen seventeen B, section two. It's rather limited, meaning in terms of what that entailed, I can read it, but I don't think you need that. Let me see, I have nothing, I don't think particular on it, so is anyone for discussion or debate? Trustee Plus?
I was just curious why the board got it, because I thought the staff got it and had thirty days to act on it, and if they didn't, or they chose not to do it, then it went to the board, is what the history?
We read our policy, and it appears that a person can challenge a book, it goes to the staff and the director, and they make a determination whether or not this violates Idaho statute. And at the end, either way it goes, it appears to me that, no matter how you slice it, it still has to go to the board. So I'm guessing we need to modify our policy. Because down here it says, if the recommendation is not to relocate, which apparently it is, that's the director's direction, then the material has to go to the board.
Oh, yeah, but, okay.
And so that's why it's on our desk. I think in the future, if we ever modify this, we're going to say, if the staff makes a determination, it goes back to the patron. If the patron's not happy, then it should come back and be challenged, or we look back by the board. Can we see anybody else? Coleman's first, trustee Robinson?
How does the staff already look at it?
Yes. Us?
So it's not in contradiction with there, it's because they looked at it and chose to not relocate it, then it goes. But if they chose to relocate it, it doesn't come to us. And I don't, and we specifically did not have it go back to the patron, because there wasn't time. They've got sixty days to do it, the staff has thirty days, so no, we don't want to add that in, so it goes back to the patron.
The verbiage in the policy says if the recommendation is not to relocate the material, apparently that's what it is, or at least not to relocate it to the adult content slash mature content collection, because it is not deemed harmful to minors, which is what I'm hearing from staff, then the case shall be submitted to the CEO and board of trustees for their review, and a decision rendered no later than sixteen days from the date that forms originally received, trustee Robinson.
I don't think we're here to discuss anything about the policy itself. We're changing it, we're just discussing if this should be relocated.
Yes, that's correct.
Trustee, I'm just correcting the chair, that it doesn't go to us in either case. If they decide, if the staff decides to relocate it, it doesn't go to us, and that
I believe that's correct. If they decide to put it in the mature content collection, we don't see it.
You're making, you're making it into something it isn't, it's just following the process.
Trustee, um, Robinson, it'll be your name, I, that was myself.
So it did not, the book did not seem to violate Idaho code. It seemed like there was a little bit of dog poop in there, about killing your enemies, and actually, that wasn't even listed, I think, on the thing, on the challenge, and then the reference to slurring. But I don't think it violates the code, but maybe it could be evaluated whether it should be in the fifth section or not.
Okay, um, okay, I looked at it as well, I don't see it as violating Idaho statute eighteen seventeen B, section two. And I don't think the board's job, if I understand correctly, is to tell the director where to put the material. It either goes into mature content collection by our say-so at this point, or it doesn't. And if the staff decides to do otherwise after this, I think that's their decision, otherwise we'll have to get involved in where all the books in the library go.
That's okay.
So if no one objects, we entertain our motion to say that we're rejecting the relocation request, because it does not violate Idaho code eighteen seventeen B, subsection two.
Summed up?
It has been moved to reject the relocation request, because it is not in violation of Idaho code eighteen fifteen seventeen B, subsection two. All those in favor of rejecting the request for relocation, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye. What do you want to say next?
I'm doing pretty well so far.
On to the bird's cage.
Oh, I think you have adopted, whatever, got to be done.
Okay, so I'll put that away.
And another, to do with the meeting itself. It was my understanding, unless it's changed, that the room is booked up for someone at three o'clock, or some group, I don't know what, so we need to be out of here before three o'clock in order to allow them to set the room up, but it's being changed, is that still the case?
No, it would be good, it would be good to be up by three, but I think the next group is four, so there's a bit, there's a bit of time, but.
So we have to, do you want us to have a two-hour meeting?
No, I was just saying that if you don't have, the next thing is in right at three.
Okay, thank, thank you, okay, that takes some of the pressure off. Okay, that closes out agenda item number four. Now we'll go back up to number three, which is a discussion on the fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget summary, and the posting for a public hearing. So, board is open for discussion. Yes? Is that me this?
Well, I just wanted, again, I just wanted to say that you just received something on your table today, so that's, again, a July installment of the tax. I think you do Friday instead of Monday, so it's kind of hostile press, but that's why it's similar than what you've looked at previously, but what you got say on the table is, one, is what we hope to publish, and the other is just the explanation of how it carried forward, is being allowed.
Is what was given out just now?
Just now, same as what we were given out earlier?
Okay.
So we're going, because of the nature of the timing of the tax installment, what you're looking at today is the first time you're looking at it.
So it includes a July payment? Okay, and something else I had to say about it. Oh, and I was questioning something else, maybe for clarity. I think there was this understanding that we need to publish this twice in the local newspaper. I couldn't find anyone that, I have to pull up the statute to cover the publication, and it doesn't say anything about buying it twice, unless we can, and I don't know if it runs for free, but I have it here somewhere, the statute, I printed it. But is, is the resumé that says we need to print this twice, just as for clarification?
I think the statute says at least once, I think it has to do with the timing, like if the papers, if we don't hit the first one in August, the second one in August might be, should be both, because we're reading August fourteen.
Okay.
So I think, but I think the statute just asks for at least once.
Yeah, I hear it, yes, it says, notice of the time and place of the hearing shall be published at least once in the newspaper, in a newspaper printed, so unless, so is it free, by the way, I'm sure today print labels are free? Okay, if it's expensive, it was valid once, I don't know, so we'll see.
Both newspapers, right, you do it in Shoshone and the CDA Press. And the one for Shoshone is the trickier one, because they only publish like twice a week.
Okay.
And if we miss the deadline, then we have to wait. So it's complicated, that paper.
Okay, you, I'm glad you know the schedule. Trustee Plus?
On the carryforward, that was one thing that I was particularly concerned about, it looks like, to me, it's roughly straightened out. I don't know if there's other details, but.
Can you tell where we are, where you are?
Carryforward.
It's this one.
And, oh, very, okay.
I would propose that the third line from the bottom, that's double underlined, two point eight million, instead of saying available to assign for expenditure, I would like that to be really clear, called estimated October first carryforward fund. So it's, we're estimating it because we don't have August and September expenses, but we have to, that's what should be published, is what on October first, beginning of fiscal year, what the carryforward fund is.
Would that be in keeping with established accounting standards?
Okay, that's what it's called, carryforward sheet.
But that, that one's not being published, is it?
It's right here.
I thought you were just talking about this.
It's, it's written, this sheet, I'm saying that line should be titled basically the way it is on the, on the legal form.
Oh, got you.
Yeah, right here.
And I, I wouldn't mind on the legal form, it's saying estimated October first carryforward. But anyway, I guess, I guess it was there, close to what I wanted.
So I, I spent a lot of time looking at the version we were given already in the past, what, what big changes are on this, because I can't process whole sheet of numbers in an instant here, so it would help a little bit, are there, are there major changes on this, or?
Well, it's mostly just the addition of the July installment.
Okay.
Which changes the estimated carryfor, prior year number, and then, and the revenue line, and it changes that number in the expenditure line. Things like personnel, the same. Capital projects, material, like all those shouldn't be the same from the previous one. It was just nailing down that one number, so the accuracy for the publication.
Okay. Um, yeah, yes, not to sure.
So is it that it went from the estimated tax payment to an actual, because we got it on Friday? With the carryforward, or was it just not ever in there? The, what was assumed was going to be the tax payment?
Yeah, we, we received it Friday, it settled today, so the, on this sheet, the insured cash sweep number is, is the actual number as of.
As of, okay.
Did that change the carryforward number?
It didn't.
Yeah.
Did it give bigger?
Yes.
Okay. That's good. Trustee Plus?
And, and the other thing that was, on the one that was sent out, was left off on the legal, on the carryforward estimate. I, I was a little bit confused, it was based on June thirtieth for account balances, now it's based on July twenty-eighth, so I think the top line of the carryforward estimate is more accurate. But what was, seems to be neglected, and I overlooked it too, was, we have to count for two months, August and September, and that's on here, so that's another big change. I don't think it's completely, or I don't think it's fully one million, but that's, that's a high number there, I think we were, we're going four fifty or something a month, I don't know. But anyway, I think, I think that's a padded number for August and September, so we got, we've got plenty.
Right, it's also my understanding, generally so that public doesn't think we're deceiving them or doing anything strange, is, we've had budget meetings already, a couple, where we advise this publication, or this draft or publication, and then we're going to have a public hearing, for the public to weigh in on what we publish, and we may make, or, but we won't go any higher, we're advertising at three percent, or also going to go lower as well, not by plan here, I mean, we, we have not really finalized this, so I got that correct, we're basically saying we, we've worked it, we've done our best, here's the way we want to go, tell us what you think public, and then we'll go ahead and have a final decision, hopefully our next regular meeting, and vote on it, and finalize it, is that? Is that where this is? Maybe not, trustee Plus?
Yeah, I would like to propose that, considering that we have well over, I, I think it's very close to two months remaining funds after you take four months at a million, or two million, I don't think it's that high. I would like to propose that we not take so much money from the taxpayer, and that we reconsider today and advertise two percent that we're doing instead of three percent. And I would like to go back to the graphs that we were given, and, and look at this real quick.
Well, I need some clarity for our parliamentary purposes.
Well, I'll clarify.
We were working on publication.
This, this is part of the discussion. We, we never voted on it, we did a consensus, but it wasn't an action item. We're entitled to still discuss whether it's two percent or three percent. And what, I've got one more here. What I'm proposing is that we
Yes, and he's out, I got one here.
On the, on the last sheet.
Well, I mean, before we go, is this, is that, is that in keeping, just to make sure I understand, I want, I want, I want to follow by what we've advertised to, is this, do people agree or disagree that are we still going to have budget discussions at this meeting? Or we simply discuss in the summary that we're publishing, I'm not sure.
We, we did not do a formal vote on the budget.
We understand that, I understand.
It's still a discussion.
Right, trusty, I'm honest, I'm not, before you get to the board, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the, the item on the agenda says twenty twenty-six budget summary statement for public hearings, I think that we discuss anything that would fall under that. Maybe not discussing line items so much, but just what, what budget are we going to publish?
Okay, continue.
Please go ahead.
So what I am asking again is reconsider two percent instead of three percent. Three percent, what we're publishing is, we're telling the taxpayers and the county, this is what we're going to do, folks. And this is our plan. And I think it looks really bad, especially when we have a surplus. And all I'm suggesting is that we, on line eight eighty-five of rental lease, we ask the director to delay, if it's eleven thousand a month for the office space, instead of a full twelve months, under two percent, it would be like six months. And three percent, anyway, take that extra there and actually make the ICRIM very specific. The ICRIM funds only go to collection at a six eleven account, right between six ten, six twelve, that is fifty thousand, fifty thousand comes out of ICRIM, and fifty thousand goes into ICRIM collections, and the difference is absorbed by the lease. And we have a surplus, if we, if there's a opportunity that comes up in October for a really great lease for ten thousand a month, the board can vote to take some of our surplus and give it to the director to go get that. So, I'm just asking that it may, we clarify that ICRIM funds only go to ICRIM collections, and the X, the shortfall be absorbed by the, the lease of the office space, which I think we can afford to wait six months. But we do have, we have over two months of, of excess money in the, on the very bottom line of the carryforward, so we can afford to put that money where we want. So I'm, I'm asking us to reconsider two percent instead of three percent, and do something like this.
Trustee Robinson?
So trustee Plus just handed this three-page chart out, and I am not a hundred percent sure what it is. I understand that when you handed it out, you said, or he said, that this is what we had before. But I see that things are crossed out, and there's bigger numbers next to old numbers, so if the trustee could, instead of just telling us what he wants or thinks, can he actually explain what we're looking at?
Okay.
I gave an overview, I didn't know if I was being cut off, but I would like the ICRIM trust, or what I'm calling trust, line, account four eighty on the first sheet, to just be listed as fifty thousand, or sixty thousand, whatever we decide, but that's money that's coming out of that ICRIM trust.
So the lines that are crossed out, you, on your computer crossed those out and put the new numbers next to it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Everything else is, I just took the sheet that was sent out last week, or two weeks ago before our meeting, I knew that Harrison. And then what I'm suggesting is add between six ten and six twelve, a third collection account, which is just the ICRIM collection. And I'm not saying it has to be done this way, there's maybe other accounting ways, but it would be something like this, so the or eighty is income, is taken out of the trust account, it's an asset we have, it's brought in, and then it's directly put into this new six eleven account that is spent on collections. The fifty thousand and the two hundred and five thousand that are there without the fifty thousand ICRIM, that's money coming from the taxpayers that we are going to, we are planning to spend for collections, the ICRIM is additional. But that, what was on the ICRIM line of four eighty was filler, different amounts that were filler to balance the sheet, to balance, balance it. So when we've only took two percent, we had to take more out of ICRIM, or one percent even more, I don't want to take anything out of ICRIM that isn't going directly to collections. So I'm just suggesting that we absorb it some other way than taking it out of ICRIM. And this is one way I suggest we could do it, if you do two percent, you know, it's, it's over half a year at eleven thousand. Yeah, eleven, half a year, the sixty six thousand if it's eleven thousand a month, so we just delay starting, I think we're in no rush to go get office space. If something comes up, then let's have a vote and just allocate some of this bottom line of carryforward to go, to go and do it then. But let's not put it in the budget that hundred and twelve thousand is coming out of ICRIM, when we're really, we really are only spending fifty thousand for actions. I just, I, I just, I'm bothered that we're not making it clear that ICRIM money only goes to collections. Is that a point?
Others.
What's the only, only thing I changed was, was the lease, eight eighty-five at the bottom, that third sheet, and, and the total. And I changed the ICRIM amount to fifty thousand instead of those numbers that are there. So the three totals for one percent, two percent, three percent each change. I'm just asking for this so that we can show on this sheet that we're going to publish, that we're taking two percent instead of three percent, because we really do have money, and if you ask for three percent, you're taking more money from the taxpayers than we need. We, we can absorb it if, out of this extra amount. And I think we have extra amount because of the growth the last year, so the taxes that were collected by the treasurer is probably higher than what was in our budget, is what I would imagine, much for the good of July.
The growth is already accounted for.
I'm saying the growth of what happened this last year, I would, I would propose that the next balance or income sheet will show that we are, or by the end of the year, September thirtieth, we will have gotten more money from the treasurer than what we budgeted, because of the growth last year. I'm not talking about the growth, that, that growth is estimated, it's coming here.
Right, we had estimated growth last year of eighty five thousand, it may be more, maybe less, maybe the same, or also, I guess, estimating the growth for the upcoming.
I'm just saying, either we didn't, we didn't spend as much money as we thought we were going to, or there's been more money to come in, or something, but we have a little more money than two months, and the county treasurer, Steve Matheson, told me taxing districts should not hold more than two months worth extra, you can hold less. But you're taking too much from the taxpayer if you have more than two months, is what he told me.
Trustee, I was, yeah, look this.
I thought that our accounting had said that you should have two months minimum.
Yeah.
Hundred percent.
Yeah.
Two months.
Other place.
So standard practice is three months. The auditor has recommended nothing less than two months. This is fifty days, so just keep that in mind when making your decision.
That's good, and I think I heard the same thing, I'd say it was, I mean, two months doesn't mean that's, you can't go higher. But that's recommended for the bottom, and I'll also say, I don't process things quickly on the fly, sitting here in a meeting and looking at all these numbers, so I'm not going to talk about making changes with, with this amended budget, it was just passed out, I, I got to process stuff and study it, I spend a lot of time, I mean, it's at home already, what we had, so leaving it to something different makes it more challenging for me, trustee Robinson?
And actually, when you think about it, this isn't different
No.
than the discussion we had last meeting, when trustee Plus was trying to get this this version through, and we all said we didn't want this version. So now he's doing the same thing, but he just has a handout. So we've already, and if we need to make a, a motion to, you know, just go with the three percent being published, we need to do that, or we can talk, or I suppose I could make a motion that we publish this legal at three percent, because we'll still have discussion after that. But at least there'll be a motion?
That's cool, I was going to ask, does the director, the assistant director have some kind of a thoughts about a proposal from trustee Plus? Well, even though I had not personally processed it sufficiently.
I mean, today's about this document getting published?
Yes.
And so the inner workings of this document are for a later time. So if, basically in my mind, if you were to say, well, no, let's not publish this at three percent, let's publish it at two percent, then we would have to rejig this thing, but all it would end up doing is probably that one fifty five, eight forty, which has become, it would, it would absorb the difference. Because that one fifty five, eight forty is basically, a part of it is, is, is money, asset we already have, and then it says collections there, it's the ICRIM money. So a lot of these numbers on this page wouldn't even change, right? And you could publish it as is, the way it is, and then you can have the hearing, and then next week, you could say we'd rather do two, and all that's going to change is like one number on this page, I mean, for the most part.
True numbers.
Well, the, the expenditures, the expenditures, it's the ninety five thousand in capital projects, the remainder is the sixty thousand eight forty, which makes one fifty five, eight forty. But we were just talking, we're still just talking about ICRIM money, right? And I don't want to get bogged down, I guess, on all that. I know trustee Plus and I seem to be talking near cross purposes, in my mind, the ICRIM money is only going to be used for collections, whether you have a GL code that says that or not. The, the ICRIM money is the, the ICrimp money is, is actually restricted for collections. So it's only going to be collections. But I take the point that right now I have a budget of 255,000 for collections. If you give me 3%, 60,000, 840 of that 255 is ICrimp. And then the next year, a certain number is ICrimp, and then next year, a certain number is ICrimp. But I'm trying to maintain 255 across the board. If this wasn't our budget, then maybe in a different scenario, we could say, well, let's have 255,000 of collection money, and let's throw all 228, 228,000 of ICrimp into a special collection project right now. This year, spend the whole thing. But I don't think that we, we can't do that. Like, because we need the money to be sort of used over time. And I'm more interested in this, in the stability of 255, which is $50,000 more for books than we had done last year. So I've increased the budget for books by 50,000. And I'd like to keep it at 255 year over year over year. And I'm using the ICrimp money to do that. I don't really follow the logic where what we do in other lines has anything to do with ICrimp. So if I put 132,000 in the lease line, that's for 12 months. Yes, I could put in 60,000 this year, but next year, it's got to be the full 12 months' worth. And so if you leave it at 132,000 and you don't get into release until January, the projected year end of that line will be short by 60,000. And at that time, the board could say, hey, with this shortfall here, like let's say it was snow removal, right? We didn't do much snow removal, so we're, we have $10,000 extra dollars. That ends up being the, the true carryover, the true surplus. And, and that, at that point in time, can be motioned by the board to say, well, let's put that into collections. So whether or not we spent 60,000, 840 of ICrimp money on collections, we don't even know that until the last quarter, August, right? To see whether, when we needed to start dipping into it. We may not have to dip into it based on what else happened in the budget. So a lot of that kind of discussion is great, and we can have it, and we can talk about it later in August. But for, for this moment in time, we're just deciding 3%, 2%. And if you do decide, no, don't publish it 3, we want you to publish it 2, all that's going to change is basically we're going to absorb that 51,000, whatever it is, 51,000 dropping from 3 to 2. We're going to absorb it mostly in that collection line. That make sense? That's, yeah.
Trustee Pass.
Can we extend the meeting?
I'm sorry?
Yeah, I moved that we extend the meeting 10 minutes.
It has been moved to extend the meeting for 10 minutes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, the meeting is extended.
Whether we, I guess we aren't actually saying, well, we are saying 3% in the middle there. We're stating to the public 3% increase. So red light going off to a lot of conservatives. I'd rather not flash that out there. And using the excuse that we can lower it later, it still looks really bad to all these people that are conservatives that are on fixed incomes, seeing that we're taking 3% when we have extra money. And you can go talk to Steve Matheson. He's the county treasurer. He was very clear, you don't have more than two months' worth, or you're taking too much money. I don't know anything about these accounting people and what their books say. But I just was going by the treasurer. And I don't think we should take more money if the, we have enough money extra. And I don't know how we got there, but we do have, I believe, extra. And this, yes, I talked about this at the Harrison meeting, but I felt I was not able to explain it to people. If they could see it in writing, maybe that would help. That's why I'm bringing it up again. Because I think it was battered away without understanding it. What I object to, and I'll say it one last time, is I want that ICrimp money considered a trust for collections. And it's basically over and above what CLN would pay for. If we're going to allocate 255,000 out of our budget from taxpayer money, this ICrimp money is over and above it. And what is happening now is ICrimp money is increasing. Yeah, it's not clear, but it's going to collections. And then the collections is decreasing and going down to some other line, which I would venture to say is, it's the office lease is one place. It's not clear where the ICrimp money is going. And all, all this budget is doing is allowing us to rob from ICrimp to supplement another line. And I don't agree with that. Chair, please.
Thank you.
So just, just for clarification, unless, I'm looking at something different. My understanding from what I've been looking at, I, I don't know where you're seeing the excess of savings. We actually have, have dropped since last year. So we're showing, I'd say about 400,000 difference from what last year was. And so I don't know if the treasurer was, or treasurer, the business manager may have more information, but everything that I've looked at comparison, it looks like, and with the 50 days versus the two months, it is less. And I think that's important, too, that we just get clarification on that. Could you speak into that?
Business manager, business manager, business manager has the floor.
I object.
You've had your opportunity.
She, she doesn't get to speak without objection.
I'm giving.
Point of order, point of order.
Please say, for your board.
The non-board members do not get the floor without consent from the unanimous consent. And I object.
Chair is not, go ahead, please. I'll take a second.
Actually, I don't think unanimous consent. I think it would just be the majority of the board.
I object.
I would like to listen.
I would like to weigh.
Okay.
Clarity, I think the public deserves clarity.
The chair has not, I think it's a warning here, favorably on your point of order. So please, business manager, go ahead and speak.
And chair, I apologize. That is.
It's alright. You can give it a floor. I'm giving it a floor. Please go ahead.
And just so that is one measure, too. I'm 100% for saving money, taxpayer money in particular. I just want to make sure that we have all the information because I'm, unless I'm being told something different, but from what I've looked at.
I'm welcoming it, please, from everybody.
The lowest we had last year in 2024 was 1.3 million. So if we go down to 842,000, that is a drop. The lowest we had last year. And the, if you take the amount that the auditor says costs us per day, which is 14,000 has changed, times 50 days, that's going to be $748,000. So if you take that 842,000 minus the 748,000, we only have $93,000 in excess. And also when the 3%, the taxpayer would save $122,000 this year.
Trustee Pass. To go back to the numbers that keep being used on this carry forward that was emailed out, it actually says, Alpine Summit previously, Anderson Brothers CPA audit FY '24. Day average daily expenses, 14,900 at 60 days is 449,100 a month, rounded to 450K. So I think I'm the one that threw out the 1,000 for the accounts payable August and September. It's really 900,000. The middle of the page for the carry forward calculation. And the very, the next to bottom line, October, well, it's actually yeah, October through January, the four months that we have to pay for is really 450,000 times four, which is 1.8 million. So there's really, if you go by this, there's really 300,000 more. So it's, that's why I'm saying it was more than two months. It's 1.142 million down at the bottom. So strike the 2 million and strike the, the 1 million, put 900K, and then put 1,800K for the second, and you add 300,000 to the bottom line. So we have more money than two months. Two months is 900,000 according to Anderson Brothers.
One of the comments was, it's going to go a while. I'm more concerned about making this thing done right. I'm really not concerned about the political aspect of it at the moment. Trustee, Hodges, please.
So I'm still heavily leaning towards 2%. But I don't think we should publish the 3%. Give us another several weeks to think about it. I would like to pray about it. All kinds of things that factor into, you know, what my vote would be. But I, I think that we should publish 3%. I was forbidden in the 10, 10 minutes. I moved that we published the 3% draft that was presented.
It has been moved that we published the 3% draft that we, was passed out. This is still open for discussion. Trustee Robinson.
A little offended that my motion didn't get any kind of attention?
I sound like you were talking about it most of the meeting and actually.
No, I, I made one. I'm just fat at it. But what is it called, called a question? No. Well, how can I just make it so we vote?
You can't really do that. I looked that up recently because I'm trying to learn my parliamentary procedures here. And if we go by, let's see, what does it go through? And we have done it before. Meaning we have called a question or put the question on the floor. But if we go by the CLN bylaws, Article 3, Section 6, I looked it up yesterday, I think it was. It states that proceedings of all meetings shall be governed by Robert's Rules of Order for Small Boards. And Robert's Rules for Small Boards says, number 3, a board member may speak any number of times on a question, and motions to close or limit debate are generally not permitted. So we're kind of caught by that. So we're going to avoid the question. We will need to get an extension on our time here. It's normal to make a motion. So I want to move that we extend the meeting for 10 minutes?
Okay.
It has been moved that we extend the meeting for 10 minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Should we vote it or?
No.
Okay, one, one aye. Did you hear them?
So there, the, for Robert's Rules for Small Boards, you still use all of them, but normally it was made a lot less formal. But on asterisk to number, was it number 3? However, motions opposed or limited, rate of the motions, whenever times, whenever it can speak. Do you have a question or an answer? Even in meetings of a small board, but not in meetings of a subcommittee, although occasionally where they are necessary, appropriate. Maybe fair than an merger or somebody, so we can.
So you can?
So we can, yes.
Okay, I'll find that out because I couldn't find, just, I'm going to jump off this regular subject, I'm parliamentary. I couldn't find anything that formalized Robert's Rules for Small Boards. I went on websites, it pretty much is identical to the one that was given to me, stuck, stuck inside the yellow version of the Robert's Rules. And I thought, well, I guess that's correct. But I, I have yet to find a solid summary of what constitutes rules for small boards. But I don't think so. Someone did call the question?
Yeah, it is.
All right, I think we now vote on whether we call, I, I perceive with a vote on the question. We need 2/3 of the body to say yes or no. So, yes.
Except for Robert's Rules for Small Board, or actually our bylaws, say that all votes accepted or legally required are by majority.
All right, I'll stand corrected. I'll stand corrected. So all those in favor of calling the question, essentially voting on the draft publication, say aye.
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 Okay, okay. So that's been resolved. So the, we are now going to head back to the main motion, which is to, to vote on whether or not we're going to publish a 3% increase that's presented to us and given out to us recently, not today. Trustee Pass.
There's, there's.
There's more discussion then. So all, let me get to, so all those in favor of publication of the budget, which was the fourth draft, you know, for publication?
It has to be the day.
Today's. Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, that's right. That was, that's the correct day, one. There's many versions out there. Is that a date on it? No. So all those in favor of the legal page that was prepared and passed out today for publication?
Point of order.
Of the, you want to take, point of order?
I'd like to say that I don't think this page is accurate. It needs corrections.
That's not a point of order. That's, that's not a parliamentary infraction. It's a point of order. It's a parliamentary infraction. You want a point of information? I can tell you the answer, but.
Parliamentary because it's, there's a mistake in it. And we can't vote on something that's not.
Is it a mistake or an opinion?
Stake, I think the film, film out of.
Trustee Robinson, aye.
Never mind.
Yeah, just one open, treasurer?
Only thing I was going to point out is, as is, if you pass this, I think there was, it may have been trustee Pass, I think, who mentioned October, the estimated October carry forward or the, on both lines, on the legal doc, I, I wouldn't show up to amend it if you didn't want it to say that before it gets published. Just making sure you have that option. Where is that? On the legal, the, the line on the second column where it says estimated carry forward from prior year. And it's again, under expenditure, that says estimated carry forward needed for next year. I believe trustee Pass wanted October 1st in there.
Trying to find out where you were on that.
This line.
The estimated carry forward for next year. Don't we officially, I assume, right, October 1st?
Yeah, but he, he wanted to include August and September, which just is saying it's not when you say the prior year. Is that not correct? Is that, would you like to explain why you wanted that?
Trustee Pass.
I, I can leave it the way it is. Is, my objection is the carry forward is wrong. It should be 100,000 higher. Because it was a million put in instead of, or 50 per month. The carry forward is wrong on this. It should be 2942. And I also think there's still something not right with the operations. Because I haven't gone through this number. But anyway, the carry forward is wrong that's on that. It should be 2942. If you're going by Anderson Brothers Alpine Summit.
Is it treasurer or the treasurer, want to address that? Because I don't want to publish something that's incorrect. I also want to go ahead and respect the fact that there was a motion to get this thing. Go get on my way or the other.
I estimated 500,000 per month. If the board prefers to estimate 450,000 dollars per month, I have no objection.
What, what change exactly? Which line and which number? Is that, is that what, have you an accurate change? I mean, is that?
Estimated.
2942.
Which one you want?
It would change the
Okay, 2924.
Estimated carry forward from prior year to 2,942,000.
29397, okay. Trustee Robinson, trustee Robinson.
So is the business manager saying that both amounts are estimated? Correct. So what's the point of changing it from one estimated amount to a different estimated amount?
Probably none. It'll, it'll wash itself out.
So I say, leave it how it is.
I'm open with that. So we're leaving it at 20, 2,942, 293.
Except that it's incorrect, and we're also taking money from the taxpayers.
So that would be a point of order?
Hey, we're back to the, to the main motion. I think this is correct. We're voting to publish the fiscal year 2026 budget. fiscal year twenty twenty-six, uh, budget to be published. Uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
So, aye as well. All as opposed?
Aye.
We noted, uh, the publication, the fiscal twenty-six publication is approved for publication. Sorry, by you. Trustee, Harrison? That leaves them. And then you adjourn. It has been moved, we adjourn. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. You need to adjourn.